Peter, did you find any of these clips?
The one that you put on my shirt? It was rattling on me on the way down the parking lot.
Quite cozy.
I found the best one too.
A little cozy.
No, the little ones.
So close to me.
I find them what I like.
I got a big marker like that. You surprise me with this.
You wanna turn that on?
How we been?
7:30.
No, that's being generous.
That's 7:30. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to call the Village of Webster regular meeting November 9th, 2017, to order and to stand with me for the pledge. Now, if you would read it, please.
Pledge will be to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin tonight, I would like us to take a moment to honor and reflect prayerfully on our veterans, past and present, who placed their lives in harm's way, many having made the ultimate sacrifice for their families, for you, for me, and our families, and for the liberties that we enjoy as a nation. You take a moment, please. Thank you. And I would also ask, let us also take a moment to remember in our thoughts and prayers the families of those who were murdered in a small country church this last Sunday, I believe 24, 25 of them, and those that are still in the hospital. Thank you. I would, at this time, ask Matt Chatfield to talk to us regarding the Restore New York Program application that the village hopes to make, or the village hopes to make, for East Main Street. So, Matt, before Jordan.
So, just so you're aware, in September, I provided you just a quick overview document. So, in September of this year, Empire State Development opened up an application period for the Restore New York Program. Now, the Restore New York Program targets, provides funds up to a million dollars for the size of community and village, up to 2 million for other communities, funds for the rehabilitation, renovation, reconstruction, or demolition of vacant, abandoned, and surplus properties. So, the caveat there is that the properties need, essentially cannot have, be more than 49% occupied, for most part they want to see vacant, the money go towards vacant properties. So, we looked at throughout the community and identified a key area along East Main Street where we have had some trouble with vacancies. And our goal is to apply for funding for three separate properties in the village that we have already sort of preliminary, preliminarily been given approval to apply. So, in October, just last month, we sent in what's called a pre-application, where we just talked generally about the properties and the project that we, that we're hoping to conduct. And we were given approval on October 24th to move forward in the application process. And that application process is relatively significant, it requires cost estimates, commitments of funds by the private, by the private entities. So, the way the program works is the Village of Webster applies for the funding. The Village of Webster would then be essentially, you know, and its application includes projects, you know, defining projects in, on certain properties, we're gonna submit for three. And upon basically award of that funding, the money doesn't come in, it's a reimbursement program. So, the village would then enter into a contract with the property owner to conduct those improvements to the property. Those improvements would be finished with, with the private financing, invoices would be submitted, that would get approved by the village. Village would then return, submit an invoice to New York State, and then as the money's coming in from New York State, it would then go back out to the tune of 90 cents on the dollar. So, for every dollar that would be invested in the property, 90 cents would be able to get returned to the property owner. Okay? So, as of right now, the three properties we have identified are the Harmony House, okay, 15 to 21 East Main, and a portion of the stretch on East Main on the north side, formerly part of the Baumann property, a portion of that would be included, those, only those portions that are actually vacant.
Okay, what portion of?
The properties that are basically just a shell, right? The little ones that have been burnt out.
The bakery?
The bakery, and then you skip over the salon, and then there's that stretch between there and Prime.
Yeah.
We wouldn't include the Prime building. There's no sense in including that building. But the other ones that are essentially, they're, they're literally just a vacant shell of a building, there's nothing there other than a facade.
And 15 to 21 on is on the south side.
Right, correct.
Oh, yes, it is.
Yeah, and that's entirely, that's the, that's mostly entirely vacant, even upstairs and downstairs, it's almost entirely vacant.
Yeah, I think he's only got three that are rented.
So, part of the process is we need to get cost estimates from the property owners about what they wish to do, or either the property owner or the entity that's in control of the property. Mr. Fitzsimmons is all on board with the, with the program. We are currently working with the course of the GNC on trying to ensure that they can submit a solid application, and we're still trying to work as well on the build, on the property of 15 to 21. So, there's a lot of work for us to do. The next steps on behalf of, so the alliance is, I'm doing all the light work, there's a little bit of work that the village needs to do, but it's very little, this meeting is one of them. The next steps are to hold a public hearing, when we will publicly, publicly discuss the properties, we will properly notice that public hearing in advance. And then we're tentatively hoping to hold that meeting on Monday, the 4th of December.
We are looking to take a resolution to do that a little later in the meeting.
Perfect. So, that would be my request, and that would allow us to fit in all of our requirements prior to the December 15th deadline for submission. Okay?
What was the deadline?
December 15th. The only cost to the village is $500 non-refundable application fee.
All right, and so?
So, who's the public hearing before? You?
As part of the, as part, so the village is the applicant. I am merely applying on behalf, I am merely filling out the paperwork. So, the village, prior to applying for the funding, needs to make public, do public notice that it is going after the public funds and that these-
Okay, but when you say the village, do you mean the village board of trustees?
Yes.
Well then, so you want this special meeting of the board of trustees on this Monday, rather than doing it on a Thursday?
Yes.
Okay, well, there's special things you gotta do to call a special meeting of the board of trustees that Heather's gonna learn all about. Have to do.
Unfortunately, that is due to-
It's gotta be on a Monday, you can't do it on a Thursday, regular board meeting?
Due to my unfortunate business travel schedule.
I'm gonna need you there.
Yeah, I will need you, I will need to be the one that will be presenting, so.
I guess we do that.
It's difficult- Do you by Skype or something?
So, Don, I needed to provide enough time to get the application together, because if I hold it now, I don't have all the information together to deliver to the public, so I cannot talk about an application that isn't fully formed.
And Don, one of the things that we have had real contention in terms of this board is having a public hearing and then voting the same night on something. So, we would like to bring that before the public on a Monday. Tuesday, we have a workshop where the board then can, in that workshop, make a decision. So, that, and then that allows Matt time on the, from the 6th to whatever, to pull things together.
What decision does this board have to make, other than spending 500 bucks for an application?
Well, they have to then make a resolution.
To do what?
To submit the application.
Are they actually gonna be able to see what the contents of this application's gonna be like by December 4th?
Yes.
So, you're gonna have all the plans from all the owners and stuff by December 4th?
I have a request that they will be sending me all of their cost estimates and their, their intentions by December 1st.
You're being pretty aggressive on this timeline.
It's the only-
It's the third story.
That's all we have.
Huh?
Okay, there's Thanksgiving in between and a lot of other, you know, but if you can get it done.
Let's think positive, Don.
Time management.
Which is why the special, the special meeting.
And, and so, do you have to publish notice of this public hearing?
Correct.
In the Webster Herald, I assume?
We have to publish a notice of the public hearing. We have to publish notice of the hearing, and then we also have to publish the property-
So, it can't be in the Webster Herald, because it's gotta be a daily newspaper.
Correct. Let me finish, Don. Let me finish, Don.
Well, I sent you an email about all this, and you never, you never, well, if you didn't get it, then I asked you all these questions in an email, so.
I didn't get your email. You sent me an email?
Yeah.
Well, let's confer, let's confer afterwards, and I can fill you. I apologize that I didn't get your email.
So, what newspaper are you gonna be publishing?
The, the, the public hearing needs to be published in advance, obviously whatever the due notice is that the village is recording. In addition, the property list, which is the three properties for which we are applying for funding, needs to have three consecutive days of publishing. Likely that's gonna have to be the day of the-
That's what we talked about. That was in your email, but that's, I then conferred with a number of people in the office about what the Daily Record is, and with Matt about when you can do that. That would be three consecutive days.
Which is, which is appropriate because of the, which is appropriate because of the nature of the business, whatever, so. So, in terms of constraints, if we were to do this at a regular board meeting, which would have been December 14th, I believe we discussed, right? That would be the one in December, you would have the overnight, and that would have been a-
Well, I mean, obviously, we can have, you can have the public hearing and the resolution done on December 14th, but I need to hit the submit button and have everything ready by 3:00 PM on December 15th. Just doesn't leave us all that much time to get things going.
So, I would like, I would like to have the public input prior to that. But again, I don't wanna do it on the same night as we, if, if people have an objection or people bring up different points, I want you to be able to think about it, we wanna be able to think about it, to meet that resolution.
I would agree. Are you, are you with the impression that we're not gonna be able to meet that timeline, based on where we're at today?
No, it's long, it's up to the three property owners, I think, the potential. So, and we don't have any control over that, neither do you, so, other than you-
Right, in the end, if there's only, I mean, if, in the end, if we only end up submitting for one or two properties, that's what we submit for, and that's, that's all we can do.
Yeah, that was only my concern, whether or not we could get all the plans and estimates from the owners and- I guess I suggest since, since probably no one that lives in the village ever reads the Daily Record, that, that you put something in the Webster Herald, even though it's not an official, a little article or a little notice, little something.
Well, with the property list, we'll be also published with the public hearing notice.
Yeah, but that's gonna be in the Daily Record.
No.
Right?
The public hearing notice was likely gonna be in, in the local, in the local paper.
The public hearing notice will also, if not concurrently, that it will definitely also be in the Webster Herald. Definitely.
This shouldn't be that complicated. I think it's funny that we're gonna do that together.
And I think it's great, I mean, if they can get money, 90 cents on the dollar, to work on those buildings and get them in a saleable position, that'd be awesome.
Thank you. Any, any other questions regarding, so, the boards, so obviously the applicant will be the village, so the village board is the one that we need to make a resolution to approve the application, obviously pending the results of the public hearing, and then it will need to be executed by the chief of the office, and then a $500 check included.
In your estimation, do you think, of course, it obviously depends on what they are going to submit, but do you think that there's a good possibility that there will be a favorable response to that?
I mean, I'm, I'm always hopeful, I'm always, I'm always hopeful. We've, we've gone after similar funds in the past, where we're gonna be polishing up and improving upon any application that we've already submitted. We submitted a, you know, funding for, for the $10 million award project, which was very unlikely that we were gonna be given, but we had a pretty good application for that two years ago. And then most recently, we submitted funding for the Harmony House as well, so we have, you know, we have an idea of what we're hoping to accomplish. So, whether or not I can spin it properly and put on the, make a good sales pitch.
Oh, nothing's ventured, nothing's lost.
Oh, my gosh, no, this would be such a huge help.
I mean, to be honest, the, the program is, they give extra points in the scoring for highly distressed communities, the village is slightly distressed in their categories. It's better than not distressed.
But the one in particular-
From a first, from a application perspective, isn't that funny, we always, no one wants to say that you're confused or stressed unless you're asking for a public one.
There you go.
The worse the better, unfortunately.
I think it's, yeah.
Because the town thinks we're distressed and we would help them out with their tools.
Oh, please don't go there. Don't even, don't go there.
Not like a racing event.
You want. Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And we will look at that resolution a little bit later.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you for your effort.
Lot of hard work. It's, it's quite a bit of work, and I'm doing one for the town as well, concurrently, so.
Oh, really?
Yeah. The town is distressed?
No, but the area is-
Don't go there.
The area is, the area is-
Yeah, the West Webster.
Right at the forecourt.
Yeah, right at the forecourt.
Yeah, one of those really ugly buildings you used to belong to, maybe.
More hair on that one than I do. Thank you.
This time, I'd like to end up the meeting to public comment. If you have something you'd like to address the board on, if you would just stand right here, we don't need a podium like that, not a microphone, we're both here.
Richard Mulder from the Webster Citizens Action League. In the past couple of meetings, we've talked about a brochure that could be placed at the Village Hall promoting the aspects of the Webster Sewer Treatment Plant and explaining how, very basics of how it came to be, and what it does for the village. And we asked permission to have this displayed at the Village Hall with all the other brochures that the village has on things in the village, and I wondered if the board had come to a decision on this.
I have had an opportunity to look at it, and I am probably of, no, I'm not probably, I am of the opinion that I agree with the fact that if this brochure dealing with the Village of Webster and the sewer treatment plant were put out by the village, I would be in favor of it. There was one part in here that, the revenue enhancement, it talks specifically, and if this is going to be something that would be ongoing, it would have to be then, I think you'd have to look at a number of years as opposed to just the 17, 18 generation of money. But it does talk about the fact that these revenue sources are available because the village has maintained a sewer treatment plant, and that is something that in this has a, I think, a statement that, not necessarily overtly, but it intends to say that without that, there would be no income, with it, there is an income, and in light of the fact that we are in a situation where we are investigating whether or not there is a, what will happen with the sewer rehabilitation between the town and the village, I don't really think that that is an appropriate statement to make at this particular time, from my point of view, that's only my opinion. And so, I would defer to the board as well, and if there are others on the board that feel that this should be pursued, I'd like to hear them.
I was kind of open to it, but then listening to Don's explanation made me rethink that, you know, if it's not a product of the village, where would it stop, you know, there's-
This is a brochure promoting a village service. It's not like we're advertising a private service or any service outside, what we're doing is trying to promote a village service which we think is essential to the village. And basically facts about what is occurring now at the sewer treatment plant, and where it came to be, and how, a little history of the sewer treatment plant, where or not-
So, I would not be in favor of it.
The sewage treatment plant has been, been used in the village since 1939, and will continue to be so unless we work with the town, but everyone knows that, and everyone uses it, and I don't see if there's any particular reason to advertise it.
Well, with, with what's going on with the town, I think residents of Webster should be familiar with what they have now, and sewer treatment is something that most residents have no idea what's going on, because it's something everybody in town just takes, or the village takes for granted, it's there. And I, so that's one of the reasons we think there should be something at the village explaining a little bit about the sewer treatment plant. I know we would be willing to rewrite the other-
Is there another?
Well, I don't have any more of those, we do have a-
I just wanna, the-
We do have an abbreviated one, we have written, the Webster Citizens Action League has put together, that we would be willing to share with the village, without our name on it, it's, we prefer that.
Was there something, is there something in the, in the Village Hall that has the brochure that you're putting that all? I saw one from, from, from John, in terms of his, you know, conducting his chores and so on, there is a-
This is abbreviated.
Something that he put together.
Yeah, when we do tours and-
There's a multi-page, very large pamphlet.
I just wanna make sure the wording.
John has put together that they do use the tours. This is abbreviated. If the board- And then have our, what's your citizens' action league name on it.
Does the board think it's a good idea to include information, or, you know, make that a priority now? The village itself could develop something and just remove any, you know, to me, any appearance right or wrong, or whatever, of any political or outside influence on it, just, you know, you think we ought to have information on there?
Well, I believe we need it.
I, I think at this time, it's not necessary to be figuring out the path that we're going on.
Well, I, I think the village residents should be informed, not in the path that you want to go, but both sides of the path, which direction, or to stay with the plant, to go with some other service somewhere else, because it should not be just the board's decision, the board should decide to go the way the village residents, the voters wanted to go. I, I still wanna disagree with you, but it should be-
No, that's what you're, you're allowed to do, I'm, I'm still not in favor, so I'm just not in favor.
Well, I would like to see something that-
This is better.
I'm open to this here, without any names and all that, this abbreviated, because coming from a third party, I don't know what it is.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
You know, where does it end? There'll be all sorts of brochures in there for-
Well, I, any brochure that you put into the bill should be brought before the board and approved by the board. Who prepares it, as long as it's a factual brochure explaining what's going on and anything? I mean, if Jake wanted to put together, or somebody wanted to put together a brochure about the DPW and what they do for the village, but I believe there is one that lists all the services available in the village.
There's stuff on the website, and quite honestly, I started doing something at 7:30 this morning and haven't finished it yet, so, I could, you know, if you wanna make a priority, we certainly can, but I, I've got grants a month later that I, I think I should try to save us money first, and-
We just had elections in the town, I, I think that citizens should have lots of available information on everything.
Absolutely, but I also think that we shouldn't politicize poop.
Maybe then we would have more than, a very few people at a meeting, if people knew what was going on, and took the effort to find out what was going on, would be very nice.
And you, you have, you have every, you know, resource available to you to let people know your point of view and whatever, but, you know, you want a pamphlet that you produce to be put in the village. You can mail your pamphlets to every village resident, if you want, you go door to door and put them in their doors, which probably would be more effective than, than, you know, how many people are actually gonna take these out of the village?
That's my question.
I know, thanks.
But, you know, so.
I, I, there are pamphlets in the village, all the ones in the village, many of which will be put together. I've read them all, so, say how many people are gonna pick them up in the village, I don't know, but I've read them, even ones that are not about building a new garage, which I'm currently doing, yeah. So. I think you should not have to go to the Village Hall and foil or disturb the clerks to, office staff to find out minor information. And the more information that's easily available at any village or town hall, the better, as far as I'm concerned.
Would there be, these are, I think, some of the things that are in here are non-factual, necessarily they're, but they're, a large amount of this is factual material. Would there be a problem with the mayor using some of this material to write an article? That would appear in the Herald that would somewhat describe the-
I think we'd be willing to sit down and help you edit the brochure.
I don't need to, I don't need the help of sitting down to edit, I'm just saying, it's factual material, would there be an objection to my using the factual material? I don't think there can be, but, other than that which may be-
I don't see any objection, I mean, it's factual material, it's gathered through public sources, that, and relevant records.
With, with what Jake has talked to me about-
No copyright on anything.
What Jake has talked to me about in terms of what is, the possibility of things coming up, you can probably include that in, in things that I could write. Right? We could collaborate a little bit.
I agree.
We're just trying to-
I think at the moment, the board for this pamphlet, at least this one, the answer would be no. And again, it is an issue that is going to be before and is before this board, we have been asked to meet and to have a joint discussion with the town. I have invited the town to come here for a joint workshop, and I have not heard back yet. So, it is an issue that is before the public and will be before the public, and so, it's pretty usual.
Like I said, we're just trying to inform the public, we're not trying to go against the village, obviously we're supporting sewer treatment plant as it is now, and the improvements that have been discussed. And at a meeting a few months ago, we had the engineering company in and discussed the improvements they recommend and the cost, and, and their recommendations, and so.
No, we appreciate the information that's in here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else?
If he can just latch his hand up.
Right there, that's fine.
Mine's really quick. I got an email from the Course of the Genesee the other day, and I just wanted to see if I could pass out a quick flyer to you. They're having their breakfast with Santa on Saturday, December 2nd, from 9:30 to 11:00 a.m. And I don't know if you'd be willing to just take a look at this and you just talk it up a little bit, would be great. This is, what they do is, have any of you ever been to this?
No.
Okay. What they do is they have the kids come down and they basically feed them and then they sing. So, which is what they do, of course. So that's, it's a very successful event. It was great last year. I took a bunch of pictures. So if, just want to make you aware of it and see if you guys, you know a lot of people, as we all do, and you could, if you could just talk to people about it and encourage it with families especially, it's a great time, so.
Is it the same day as ours?
Yeah, but ours doesn't start till later.
Right, this isn't the morning.
Yeah, so that's a good...
So it isn't the same day, but it's a way to make the day kind of linked together. It is $5 a person or $20 a family maximum. So depends on how many people they have. And what that really does is, it's not much of a fundraiser. What it really does is pay for the food. So it's just a great, but it's really fun and they have Santa there and like I said, they sing. They have different groups sing, so they have quartets and that kind of thing, so.
That's good.
Oh, it is, yeah.
And it's held in the bottom floor and for those of you who have been there, it's the kitchen reception area, not upstairs, so.
Is this going to be in the Herald?
I'm sure they'll try to put in the Herald, email me and ask me to do as much as I could to get the information out, just while I'm here. And I'm sure they'll try to put information, but I'll talk to them on Tuesday night when I'm meeting with them, all about what they're doing for the village.
All right.
So, I really, I really like it.
So this will be in the morning and then the afternoon would continue and then the parade in the evening.
Yep, exactly.
I'm going to put that on the website, too.
All right, thank you. Would it be all right with you guys if I just, if I send Joe the colored version?
For the website?
Sure, why not?
All right, you got it? I'll forward it. Thank you.
Any one else? And as we close, the public portion of the meeting, and we will move to board's business. And first of all, that is approval of our minutes from the board meeting on October 26th. You have had an opportunity, and I hope everybody has looked at it. Are there any corrections, additions, additions? Everybody has seen?
Good, yeah.
Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Lansing?
Aye.
Trusty Bautane?
Aye.
Trusty Abalito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
The next is a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I know that there were a couple of questions, but I believe that they have been answered.
You want to jude?
We did, and then there was another question that was brought up that I was, that I listened to and heard the answer to, so I was good with that. And I would ask for a motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Bautane?
Aye.
Trusty Abalito?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Lansing?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Item number three, we have here before us a resolution to set a public hearing to discuss the Restore New York application and property assessment list. As you heard in the presentation from Matt, in order to fulfill the requirements for the application of the Restore New York program for East Main Street, projected about 45,000 square feet of property to be rehabilitated on 90 cents on a dollar, a public hearing needs to be held to go over the proposed project and properties that are involved. So I would propose that a public hearing be held in order to accomplish this within the timeline, a public hearing, a special meeting be held of the board, setting a public hearing to discuss Restore New York application and property assessment list on Monday, December 4th at 7 o'clock here, or not here, but in the large community room. And I'd like to move that forward. Is there a second?
I'll make that motion.
Mayor, Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trusty Abalito?
Aye.
Trusty Bautane?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
And Trusty Lansing. Motion passed.
Again, to everybody out there, there will be, we will set a special meeting, public hearing on Monday, December 4th at 7 o'clock in the large community room to hear the presentation and get feedback from the community regarding the Restore New York application that the village board would like to, would like to make on behalf of property owners on East Main Street. Moving on. Item number four. It is my pleasure to put forward a resolution to appoint Heather Halstad as village clerk, term ending July 10th, 2019, annual salary of $53,000, starting on Monday, November 13th, 2017. We have had a number of applications. We have gone through the process, and I put forward this name for the board's approval. Do I...
I'll make that motion.
A motion?
I'll second it.
Trusty Abalito?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Trusty Bautane?
Aye.
Trusty Lansing?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Welcome.
Heather?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good job at the interview.
Thank you.
Before we go on, I would like to thank publicly from the board and from myself, Joseph Amalte, going clerk for three and a half years, almost four years, her dedicated service to this board and to the Village of Webster community. We wish her, as a board, all the success, personal success, and best wishes for her and her future endeavors. Thank you, Joseph, for your time and for your service to the community. Item number five, in a discussion that I have had, we are going to be putting this off. It's going to be tabled. I'll tell you why. What you have in front of you is a projected estimate of the engineers in terms of what their projected cost is, which would be included in the letter of credit to the board. The problem is that none of us have seen, or do not believe, the results of the minutes of published or come to us from the planning board in terms of the vote. Is that something that has come out yet?
The notice of decision was given, the estimate figures, to show that after the meeting, which evidently it didn't get added to the packet.
Didn't get added to the packet.
Is the notice of decision, is that the same as the minutes of the planning board meeting?
No, it's a separate document that's prepared based on the motions of the meeting.
Did she receive it?
She did, but...
Well, it doesn't really matter anyhow, because...
Right, because we do not have a...
It's section 137-5 of the subdivision of land, local law, section I, where it says, "Any performance bond or letter of credit, furnished in lieu of the installation of the required improvements shall be in the amount fixed by resolution of the planning board." So the planning board fixes the amount. They don't make a recommendation to this board for the amount. They fix the amount. So hopefully their decision didn't say it was just a recommendation, but it had to be the amount. And then it says, "Shall be secured by such composite of subdivision or issued by such bonding or security company as shall be approved by the village board and shall be approved by the village board as to form sufficiency and manner of execution." So this board approves the form sufficiency and manner of execution of the actual letter of credit or performance bond. So you got to see, we got to actually see the proposed letter of credit or performance bond in order to... And it's probably, the developer probably hasn't even submitted that to the village. I don't know if he was asked to submit it to the village, but I don't know.
I don't believe so, because I believe this is all key.
So someone like Will, probably is the person that should contact, I forget the guy's name, Mark Van Exeter, should call him and say, "We need to see the actual letter of credit and/or performance bond." Typically, it's a letter of credit from his bank. They're easier to get than the performance bond. So as soon as, as soon as this board has that and the copy of whatever the planning board did, you can put it back on the agenda.
I know that, I know that they went through, they looked at it. I know that Chris considered the numbers that were put forward by the engineer and they thought that it was reasonable in terms of that. However, if it was a recommendation only to, you know, to move forward with it, then they need to have...
Yeah, they can't take a resolution recommending that the planning or that the village board accept a letter of credit at the amount of whatever it is, but I don't know at the bottom line of notes. It's got to be, they actually set the number for the letter of credit. Probably a matter of semantics, but...
Yeah.
They're not applying for building permits and they're going to be breaking ground next week, I think so. It shouldn't, I don't think so.
I'll speak to Joe and about that and show you how this gap got on as well. We'll table that to a future point, future time, and we'll come back to that. Item number six, we're going to add a resolution to approve the amended and restated bond resolution for North Avenue Connector project, and I will read some of it. You have all had this in your packet. You have all had the opportunity to read through it in its entirety, so I will summarize. The amended and restated bond resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster, Monroe County, New York, amending and restating in its entirety the bond resolution of the village dated November 22nd, 2016, relating to the North Avenue Connector project, estimating that the total cost thereof is $1,230,000, appropriating said amount, therefore in authorizing the issuance of $850,000 in serial bonds of the village to finance said Whereas the Board of the Village of Webster, Monroe County, by bond resolution adopted on November 22nd, 2016, the original bond resolution authorizing issuance of serial bonds and bond anticipation notes of the village in the principal amount of $850,000 to undertake the North Avenue Connector project within the village, consisting of the reconstruction, reconfiguration, repaving, and improvement of roads, walkways, bike lanes, crosswalks, parking areas, related infrastructure and other ancillary related and incidental improvements along portions of North Avenue, which will include new street trees, street lawn areas, streetlights, landscaping, signage, crosswalks, striping for bike lanes, pedestrian and bicyclist safety improvements, and off-street parking areas. At the State Route 104 interchange, installation of bike lanes, related lane reduction, reconfiguration, pedestrian crossing signals, removal of slip ramps, and expansion of the central median, restriping and widening of crosswalks and signage. Route 104 interchange to Ridge Road, restriping of travel lanes, bike lanes, expanded sidewalks, expanded tree lawns, additional street trees, replacement of street lighting, and original installation of crosswalks, signage and installation of the gazebo, collectively known as the original project. And since the board now intends to amend and restate the original bond resolution in its entirety pursuant to the terms of this resolution, for the purpose of increasing the estimated amount, maximum cost of the original project from $1,540,000 to $1,230,000, and restating the plan of financing for the original project. Now therefore, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Webster, Monroe County, New York hereby resolves by an affirmative vote of not less than two-thirds of its members of such bodies to amend and restate the original bond resolution in its entirety. May I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trusty Abalito?
Aye.
Trusty Lansing?
Aye.
Trusty Bautane?
Aye.
Trusty Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
We're looking at that going, it is out to bids, by the way, the project. Bids were made available on November 1st. The bids will be opened on November 21st, and that evening, we may be making, maybe we'll talk about it a little bit later on, of the evening of the 21st.
We'll just be getting the bids, and they'll have to be reviewed and qualified. We might have some preliminary...
Preliminary?
An idea. We'll be smiling or crying and...
Hopefully smiling.
Hopefully smiling, that's right. They'll all come in under maximum amount and move forward with everything we hope to Item number seven, the resolution to establish a capital reserve fund to finance certain capital improvements. Some of you may remember that this has been before the board before. This was passed previously, but the notice of the permissive referendum, referendum did not make it into the paper, so therefore it became null and void. And so at this particular time, we need to do it again. So, this resolution to the Village of Webster Board of Trustees to establish a capital reserve fund to finance a specific capital improvement, whereas the village has obtained federal aid pursuant to the appropriate sections of Title 23 U.S. Code as amended and as administered by the Federal Highway Administration for a highway improvement project known as the North Avenue Connector project that includes daily enhancements to North Avenue from Orchard Street to the intersection of Main, New York State Route 404. And whereas funding for the North Avenue Connector project calls for the apportionment by the, of the cost of such projects to be borne 80% by federal funds and 20% by local funds, and it's actually, I guess, going to be 77 and 23. Whereas the Village of Webster Board of Trustees desires to establish a capital reserve fund in order to accumulate monies to finance the local portion of the cost of the project, and whereas the engineers' estimates for the project have increased the maximum amount of capital improvements, now therefore be it resolved. The purpose of this reserve fund is to accumulate monies to finance a specific capital improvement. It will be financed from the reserve fund at the cost, is the cost of the North Avenue Connector project to be borne by the Village of Webster. Specific description of the project is found in the initial project proposal dated December 9th, 2014. The estimated maximum cost of such capital improvement is $1,230,000, of which the Village of Webster is responsible to contribute approximately $418,200. So what we're trying to do at this particular point is to establish this reserve fund. This resolution will be subject to a permissive referendum pursuant to subdivision four, section 6C of the general municipal law. It will be duly published. It will be open for that for, I believe, 30 days. And then if there is no call for it, passes. So may I have a motion to move this resolution here to establish a capital reserve fund to finance a specific capital improvement, which is the North Avenue Connector Project.
I'll make the vote.
I'll second it.
Trustee Velcane?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Blido?
Aye.
Trustee Lawer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, done. Anything for us this evening?
Uh, no. Not really.
A lot of aside. All right, next we move to office, and first we have the comp and overtime report. We have a copy of that, any questions on that?
Yeah, I think on the call-ins there, why, why so many hours on the call-in? Am I missing something there?
We're, yeah, okay, it's for Kevin. Let me just see the dates of this. Off or review.
Doesn't look low, high, or?
No, honestly, there were storms, I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, storms and sours were flying, I think that's what it was.
There were storms, we had one sewer issue, but then four for Kevin, but I don't know if he came into the storms as well. But the other guys, it was when we had trees down, you know, we had a lot of trees down across Maryville.
Did you ever drive through there after that one storm?
Yeah, Maryville, Curtis and Fuller, there's about four of them, they were down, you know, so, yeah. Oh, I was looking at the overtime column, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, that does. I'll double check what that is, because that does seem silly, and I did not have a chance.
Because Capitan earned it out for weekend duty, correct?
Yes, yep.
It may be going out late tonight, huh?
Yeah.
Oh my gosh.
Lawen?
Passes all up.
I think it's a nice season tonight. A couple inches, a little.
Too bad. Associates, you're not gonna be there.
Budget and modifications and transfers, we have one budget modification. This comes from line zero four dash ten dash ninety-nine fifty dash nine hundred. Transfer to reserve of one thousand, fifty dollars to line zero four zero eight, dash eighty-one thirty dash four fifty-five, the engineering and professional services. The digester, which hopefully Jake will talk about a little bit more. This allows for the services to pay the invoice of Mahar Engineering. They took a look at the internal works of the digester before it was put back to cover on and put back into operation, I believe. And had not been previously budgeted for, as a lot with the digester had not been. So that will cover that invoice. And so I believe that. We probably need a motion to make that transfer?
Yes.
So, make that motion, wait a second. Thank you, Carl.
Trustee Blido?
Aye.
Trustee Lawer?
Aye.
Trustee Velcane?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And maybe we'll lead into, first of all, the sewer department, you could just bring us up to date with that. That'll be quicker than probably the DPW. So, digester is working again?
It is on the path to working, and it's working, but to be fully working, it's, it's gotta be digesting and it's gotta be up to heat, up to, up to temperature. So once it's seeded and it starts the process, it's basically like a stomach, it's, there's two types of bugs, and it's not gonna be quicker.
Once he gets started.
Just real quick, there's acid formers and methane gas formers or methane formers, so you gotta, you gotta get the first set of bugs working first and then they provide food to the second set of bugs and then everything's coming. It's on the way to that.
Like your stomach. That was good.
Thirty-five degrees.
Yep.
We got the bugs in there, we all got the bugs in there.
So that is, so we're up and running with that, and there have been some complaints, but not to reveal. Anything else with them? We're good?
I think we're good.
Then run to DPW.
And I'll make this very fast.
You promise?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Obviously, we're doing leaf pick-up until the first snowfall, not including what we might get really soon. But we always ask people, keep them out of the gutters, keep them out of the street, put them out near the road, we'll get to them. Especially this year, we've seen, I think we've gotten, I read the other day, thirteen inches of rain or more than we normally get, which is about a hundred and fifty percent of what we normally get. We only get about thirty usually to this year to date. It's just very important to keep, they're not falling, they're not getting washed down, without people putting them in there and getting washed down. Because we've had guys in, and that's one of the, now that we talked about the call-in day, that's one of the things that's flooding. And the flooding, nine times out of ten, is a matter of somebody going out there with a rake and pulling the leaves off the top of the catch basin. But you can clean them off, and then ten minutes later, you know, the wind and the rain is knocking out more leaves, flowing into there and they're plugged back up, so. But, you know, it helps if people keep the leaves out of the street, though. And it's, it's pretty dangerous, when people put them out there, big piles, cars swerve to go around when they wanna drive through them, and you know how you get cars swerving around, so. It was like three, nine people that. As we're approaching snow season here in the next, two months from now, the, want to remind everybody that's when, you know, we have no parking in the village, two AM to six AM all year round. It's important in the summer and, you know, spring, summer and fall, primarily for sweeping. We go through that schedule and get that, but in the wintertime, it's very important because we have to, every single street and with a big plow truck with a wing on it, it's dangerous when you get cars parked, especially if they're opposite each other and anything like that. So make sure that the cars are off the road. And as it for that, grants, I just want to give everybody an update. I'm gonna go bad news, good news, bad news, good news. Bad news is the D E C notified us that two grants that we put in for as part of the urban and community forestry program for the leaf vacuum and the chipper were not chosen. I've got a conference call with them tomorrow to try to go over our grant application to see what we can do better next time and see how. They got, they got more applications than they ever did. The ones that looked like they got funded were pretty straightforward, it was planting trees, doing inventories, tree management plans, things like that. Ours was a little more creative, we were trying to draw a link between if we provide brush pickup and we provide leaf pickup, that leverages our ability to promote trees beyond the right-of-way. If people have something to do with the brush that develops and the leaves that they develop from having a tree, they're more likely to have trees in their yard. I don't know if they look at that and don't like to bend their thinking at all, they'd rather have something straightforward, so. I'll be polite tomorrow and ask them what we can do better. But good news is recycling grants were announced two days ago for another D E C program. So the recycling grants, I'm gonna, you know, try to look at that. That's how we got a leaf vacuum or a chipper before, I'm, I'm pretty certain, so. I'll look and see what we can do, maybe just hopefully take the same applications that we completed, change some dates and add what we learned tomorrow, beef them up a little bit and then turn them back in and have a different result, so. Still trying to get that. Bad news, clean community grant, and we discussed that, we're doing it too, there's ten high-impact items that we had to do. And if we do four of those items, you can get, the first one to do it's like a hundred thousand, and the other one, there's six more that were remaining there, fifty thousand dollars. A week and a half, they, they were there, they were there, they were there, and they were evaporated. So I don't know if they just updated their website or if they actually went that fast. But now the website shows that there's none.
We were on that way too, I think we had three, right? Or pretty close to three or four.
We've gotten, you know, one was done, we're working on the other three, and we're getting close on those, to get that fourth. Good news, on that, you know, the offset that a little bit, is zero emission vehicle and infrastructure grants came out. We're not looking to get any zero emission vehicle just yet, maybe someday. I mean, Clancy wants one of those workforce trucks, it's all electric. But the infrastructure grant, we're looking, we've discussed putting in a charging station. Since there's not a big hurry to put this charging station and now to be able to qualify as one of those things for the four high-impact items and get that grant, we're gonna go through the paperwork and try to get the grant approved to offset and pay for up to eighty percent of the cost installing these. There's different parameters, it's gotta be a network level two, blah, 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 but we're getting all those things together. Part of that I sent out today, just for you guys to review and comment on. Part of that, the requirements for that is to have a, is to have locations that you highlight or where you're gonna put these as part of a municipal strategy to encourage green, clean vehicle use and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. If I back up for a second, this grant works, there's like five pass fail criteria, you get through that group, then you have to get seventy points after that. There's one item worth sixty points and then a couple thirties and twenty-fives and then a bunch of tens. It's gotta add up to seventy even, seventy to even qualify. The sixty-point thing is to have the location part of a municipal strategy, I guess, to, to improve or increase clean vehicle use or reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, that's sixty points, it's almost all the points we need, so we had to come up with a strategy. So I sent that, we worked on that yesterday, I forwarded on it, so if you wanna look at it. I don't believe, I don't know, I don't think it's not, I guess if the village has to take any action on it or if it's just, hey, here's a strategy, from a departmental standpoint, this is what we're gonna do. It was something I know we, we looked at, putting in a green thing, so. Take a look at it, see what you think, if you, if you think we had a, you know, I don't know if it's gonna be approved, but it's gonna be kind of accepted, whatever, and we can discuss now what their next steps, if we have to do anything with it. I'm trying to get it in as quick as I possibly can, because it seems like everybody's, pretty quick and a lot of them have full-time grant writers and others, so. I'm trying to get these guys done, so, and it's money, I mean, it's, it's, this isn't a humongous amount unless you're going for one of the D C rapid chargers, but it's still eighty percent.
Arms to guns.
It's a good deal.
Yep.
Are you done?
No, I got more good news, I'm gonna add more good news. The community development block grant, we apply every year, we're going through. This year, we've got a notification that we were awarded sixty thousand dollars for Lapham Park, Park Avenue. It's about seventy-five percent of what we put in for, but it's usually, it's pretty, another one that's pretty high. I think it's the second highest one. So, we're pretty pleased with that, and we can, you know, do as much as we, as much as you can. And obviously, at this point, that's gonna be going on in the spring, so we'll start the process of that, knowing that we have the ones now. We're gonna have a pretty tight window in the spring to get it done.
Okay, is Lapham Park for us?
This, this was one side of Lapham Park and one side of Park, or Park Avenue, going through five-foot wide sidewalks, trying to approve those, and then keep doing this and building up that. The community development block grant only applies where there's low to moderate income.
Oh, okay.
Areas on a map, for some reason, the old village popped onto the map this year. It hasn't been on the map before.
Okay.
Yeah, it popped on, so before it pops back up, that's why we wanted to try to, because other areas of the village are kind of consistently on, mostly north of Bridge, is consistently on, certain areas there are, since this popped up, we wanted to make sure that we had that this year, so. And that's all.
Well, it wasn't, wasn't bad.
Nine minutes.
Not bad.
That's it, it's a plate.
Well, eight forty-two if you wanna be.
Yeah. One more cup of coffee, I could've made nine, but I stopped.
Oh, please, don't, don't.
Yeah, I was pretty excited about the sixty thousand, so that worked very nicely. If you've had a chance to look again on Fuller Park, done in front of the music store, Tim Clancy has put new, thirty-seven, two degrees, or thirty, two hundred degrees?
Twenty-seven hundred K color temperature, and, and then thirty-six Y.
Lights, there's one on each of those streets. So, what we've been doing, and, you know, this is for the public as well, what we have been doing over the past several weeks now, quite a few, is changing out those lights, looking at the color, looking at the illumination that they're providing. They are LED lights, and we're just trying to get a sense and a feel of what would be appropriate. I think that, you know, it's, it's hard, I've been so used to the illumination in the village, as it is right now. I like it, and I hate to go through a stuff light, and it's just something that doesn't appeal to me there in the old village where the lights are. Maybe on Main Street, it's a little different, and if we come up through the connector, because you're illuminating there, but we'll see. But anyways.
Did you see the Christmas lights were all put up?
Oh, I know, finally, finally.
But anyways, if you are, you know, if you are out and about and you go down Fuller or Dunning or Park or in front of Main Street, in front of the music store, there are examples of LED lighting that have been put up. If you want to comment, you can.
Yeah, please, you know, good, bad, indifferent, you know, it, please, I know Clancy's been working pretty hard on it and is very happy to instrument, let him see, play over what he thinks. So we started out with five thousand, or four thousand K.
That was very, very white.
Yeah.
Very stark.
But, you know, I've driven by, and I think these are a lot closer now than, than anything has been. But I haven't stopped and got it, I don't know, I've stopped and get out and walk and see. Because sometimes you get a, it's, it's almost psychologically, you get a sense that because it's a little lighter color, that it's a lot more light, but you can see how far down the light spreads too. And one in a mix of them is still kind of different. These, I don't think stand out as much as the first one certainly. The first ones were, it's like if you have a chandelier and just made one bulb and it's an LED or something.
When you look down the street, you can see a significant illumination from each one of those that are currently there in the street and across the street as well, because they're staggered. I'm not sure I've noticed that yet, you know, but anyways, they're there. Publicly welcome to take a look at it and express, follow in your comments, others know. Anything else? Then in terms of events, Saturday, eleven o'clock, I believe, is the Veterans Day Ceremony at Vet Park, followed by luncheon for veterans and their spouses, family, in the community room. That is set up, and that's why we're here tonight, because it is set up for Saturday. We have a bourbon night.
Yes.
Oh, that's what I'm talking about.
When is that?
We're all going to that.
No, we don't.
We don't, we don't, but the bid.
Everybody woke up.
The bid, they're, they're hosting in Harmony House, and there are tickets, I believe they're on sale. I think they're about twenty dollars, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five.
The bid website.
On the bid website.
Yeah, they're on the.
There is no walk-around, as there has been for the wine and the beer walk. They are keeping the bourbon drinkers off the street, and providing food.
And it's within walking distance of my house, so I'm happy. And it's within walking distance of my house, so I'm happy.
Our next, our next workshop, our village meeting, Board meeting, will be the 21st on Tuesday, because Thanksgiving will be the 23rd, and our workshop will be December 5th, so...
So we're meeting on the 3rd and the 5th.
And we are meeting, no, that should be the 5th. Check your calendars.
Well, 3rd's a Monday.
3rd should be the month.
No, the 4th is Monday.
Fourth, yeah, that Monday.
So we set it for a Sunday?
No, December 4th.
We set December 3rd, what do we do?
No?
Yeah, we broke down to December 3rd.
Oh, it's 4th, and then the workshop's the 5th, or the meeting's the 14th.
Well, I know it should be, but I don't know if that's...
So 3rd to the 3rd. What is it really now?
Not good. December 4th, okay, Monday, December 4th. All right, there we go. December 4th is the public hearing, and December 5th will be our next workshop.
Yeah, it's a workshop.
Yes, gotcha.
It is 8:40, and I'll take a motion to, make that motion.
I'll second it.
Paulie, David?
Aye.
Aye.
None? Thank you very much for coming, and we'll see you next time.